Good evening and welcome to the June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Take a brief moment of silence to reflect on all of the events going on, both here and abroad. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being recorded by LCAT, and if there's anyone else in the audience recording, if you could identify yourself. Seeing public comments, is there anyone in the public that would just make a comment this evening? See no one online or in person. Council comments. Are any counselors with a comment this evening? Okay, seeing none. Town manager report. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening. How are we doing? So, as usual, attached are the project reports for weeks of June second and June ninth for the construction of the high school and auditorium. Just wanted to give special thanks to Skanska, specifically our program manager, Rich LaRue, who spends a lot of time putting these reports together, and they are quite thoughtful and insightful and are providing a nice historical documentation of this whole process for us, so thank you to them. There was a public service announcement that went out last week about construction at the high school. As of last week, that student parking lot, turf field, and tennis courts are closed and inaccessible to the public. Construction will begin in those areas, both site work and underground utilities. I guess they'll be reopened again in early August, but until then, those areas are fenced off, and we ask that the public refrain from trying to access those areas until we communicate that it's safe to do so. So I'm pleased to announce the Westcom team was recognized and awarded the telecommunications team of the year for two thousand and twenty four. Ceremony was held on June eighteenth, hosted by the Massachusetts Communications Supervisors Association and the State nine-one-one Department. This recognition is a testament to the hard work, dedication, and professionalism of every member of the Westcon team, so thank you and congrats to the whole team. Their new trophy case at the new building will have something that they can put in right away, which is kind of nice. And sort of lastly, I guess I want to wish everybody a happy and healthy Fourth of July. Certainly a special holiday for the entire country, but nobody does it better than the town of East Long Meadow, so I hope everybody has a safe and happy and healthy one and enjoy. Upcoming events, July second, Coffee with the Town Manager. Contrary to rumor, I'm not taking the summer off. We'll be there in July and August. That's at ten thirty at the COA on July second, and then all of our festivities, but I don't want to steal any thunder. But the Fourth of July Parade, obviously, is the fourth, starting at ten at the high school, so high school slash St. Mike's in that region there. But that's all I have for tonight.
Great, thank you, Tom. Anyone have any questions for Tom?
I do. Sure enough. I was approached by a resident on Summers Road asking if we received any timeframe that Summers Road was going to be repaved. Her concern was she has her driveway being done and she doesn't want both to coincide at the same time.
Right, and last time I had talked about a scope of work meeting with DOT, which I think was supposed to be last week that got rescheduled, so I don't have an update on that because I don't think I've gotten an update from DPW whether that meeting happened and/or what details came out of it. So it will be this paving season, as I understand it, no matter what, they have to spend.
I hope because they've been doing work on Summers Road like crazy.
Yeah, so our crews have been out in front of them, hopefully, as the contracts are written, saving money that we can spend elsewhere.
But we're not talking within the next three weeks.
No, no, no.
So nope, we're talking about Gunnery's done, and I'm like, I don't think so, but I said, I will ask and I will report back to you.
Oh, yeah, we'll have all those notifications for bidding and all that stuff that we'll have to be aware of and all that, so. Yeah, no, nothing, no details to share yet for contract, for scope and/or schedule.
And then I think it was on our last meeting, Westcom grand opening, July.
July fourteenth, yep.
That'll be awesome.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, thank you.
Then, under Communications, Correspondence, and Announcements, there's three things that I have this evening. The first, we received a letter from, I believe, Joe Sullivan in regards to a ten-year remembrance being held for Gunnery Sergeant Thomas Sullivan, and that'll be held on Wednesday, July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at ten thirty AM at the Thomas J. Sullivan Memorial Park at South Branch Parkway in Springfield. That was the first one. The second is the Fourth of July Parade, as Tom mentioned. So the council, as part of Unit One, will meet at the St. Michael's parking lot, since the student parking lot won't be accessible, and there's no onsite parking, so we'll have to either get dropped off or walk or
Uber.
Uber or something. And then if we could meet around like nine, nine fifteen, because the road closes at nine thirty, and that.
That'll be fun.
That was the second topic, and then the third was, the town's also holding a hazardous waste collection day on Saturday, July nineteenth, at the fire station from nine to twelve, and it's for residents only, and if you wish to participate, you can register on the town's website.
Is it again the town?
At the fire station.
Fire. July what?
July nineteenth. Okay, that was it for communications. It is too early for our public hearings, so I would entertain a motion to move the orders of the day until it's time to go to public hearings.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to go out of order. Any other discussion? It is a roll call since we're on Zoom. Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
Great, we are out of order. We have no licensing matters, financial matters. We have, which ironically coincides with our public hearing at six fifteen for the Chapter five hundred Fee, Fine, and Penalty Schedule. You can do it now, but essentially the overview of this one is, as the Bylaw Committee was going through the Fee, Fine, and Penalty Schedule, reviewing the updates that came out of the budget process, we noticed a few other discrepancies with the stormwater fee schedule that we appropriated in the budget last month. And nothing's like majorly wrong, it was just more, when you looked at the description column, it had the old amounts from when we first adopted the bylaw, even though there were new amounts in the right-hand fee column, so we needed to remove the incorrect amounts from the middle column, so there wasn't any discrepancy as to what we should be charging someone. And then the right-hand column didn't have per acre listed next to the amounts, it only said per acre in the middle, so it was a little confusing there. There was also one category, I forget the name of it, that said, it had a question mark next to it.
Agricultural vacant land.
Yes, agricultural vacant land, and it was really supposed to be part of the one that was directly above it. And then I think there was one other that it wasn't, it was just a bold formatting thing, it wasn't bolded, so it made it look like it was a line that didn't have a fee, but really it was the header for the fees beneath it. I believe those were the three things that we.
So.
No comment.
Sure. On agricultural vacant land, it now has listed zero for fees. And I don't think that's accurate, because as Diane Bishop was saying, under farms, when there's a V next to the code, like seven fourteen V, the V stands for vacant. And I think the agricultural vacant land should be up above, so it should say farms slash agricultural vacant land, because those are all the codes for it. And that way there, the rate would be fifty-seven and fifty-nine dollars.
Let me just find that page again. A sec. Oh, right, right, right. Yes, it was supposed to be combined fifty-nine.
But those zeros are actually not supposed to be there.
Yeah, because originally the version from last year had fifty-seven next to farms, and it was crossed out for the new one in FY twenty-five. Well, actually, for the next year to be fifty-nine. Good catch. Funny, when you go through it three times and you still. Okay, I think those were the only things that we noticed changes to it. So if it was the council's pleasure, we could vote on it now, or we could save the vote until we do the public hearing?
Sure. Okay, I'll make a motion to rescind the motion made on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, to approve the proposed FY twenty twenty-six stormwater fee schedule, a copy which is attached to the motion and is made a part of, a part here of, by reference entitled FY twenty-six Stormwater Enterprise Rates FY twenty-six Stormwater Fee. Another motion or?
Yeah, we'll do this one first. Okay, motion was made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And Jim? I mean, John?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and then we'll have the second motion to reapprove, but at the end we'll probably just want to add with the correction for fifteen dollars next to farms slash agricultural vacant land.
You see. Okay. I make a motion to approve the revised proposed FY twenty twenty-six stormwater fee schedule, a copy of which is attached to the motion and is made a part here of by reference entitled FY twenty-six Stormwater Enterprise Rates in column recommended FY twenty-six Stormwater Fee, the correction of fifty-nine dollars for farm.
Slash agricultural vacant land.
Slash defecational vacant land.
Great.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
And just in case that wasn't clear to anyone as well, none of the fees were actually changing from what we just did in the budget a month ago. It was more just some formatting issues that we noticed that needed some correction. Okay, financial matters. Done, we'll move to minutes. Motion to approve the tenth open session.
I make a motion to approve the June tenth, twenty twenty-five open session minutes.
Second.
It's been made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
Okay, motion passes. And then the executive session minutes.
Make a motion to approve the two tenth, twenty twenty-five session. Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Um, yes. After I had sent the correction, Jeannie, I noticed on page one under, in the matter of number one, that it says Connie, same with number two. It was the same correction as before, basically. It's just on page one, and I didn't even catch it before.
Oh, good catch.
Or do you want a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Sure.
Or do you want a motion to amend?
Um, let's just make a motion to amend. And we'll vote on that, and then we'll vote on the amended motion.
I will make a motion to amend the approval with the change on page one, under number one and number two, from Connie Browders to Constance Browders.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to amend the motion. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
The motion is amended, so now we will vote on the motion.
Oh.
Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
Thank you all.
My clock says six fifteen. Unless you want to do executive session. Just did so perfect.
So we are now back to public hearings. It's fifteen. This is a reading. So this is a public hearing at fifteenth. Review the proposed Amendment Chapter five hundred Fee, Fine, and Penalty Schedule. And the council members this evening are Jim Leiden, Kathy Hill, Emma Jones, myself, Connor O'Shea, Marilyn Richards, Ralph Page, and John Torscha, and I would ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on June twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, at six fifteen PM in the media room of the Council on Aging located at three twenty-eight North Main Street. We required second reading of the proposed bylaw amendment, Chapter five hundred Fee, Fine, and Penalty Schedule for the purpose of an annual update of all the fees, fines, and penalties for the town of East Long Meadow. The public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar. Information relating to this bylaw is available for public inspection at the town clerk's office. To view an electronic version of the proposed amendment, please visit the town's website for the council. Jean R. Quagletti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thank you, Jeannie. All right, and then this evening, we had met as the Bylaw Review Committee, the council's Subcommittee, last week to review the changes that were proposed and overall recommended, well, mostly the same as what was submitted. There was some language that you'll notice in the document that's green that came out of the committee's recommendation that was different from the blue and red text that was in the original document. Essentially, what was different, we added the language to the part that was questioned about the waiving of fees under the DPW, that it would be with the knowledge of the town manager, that only the DPW superintendent could waive the fee, rather than just anyone in the department waiving it. We changed the word dump to transfer station under the transfer stations section. Also, changed the transfer station fee from fifty dollars to sixty dollars. There was the second duplicate mattress line that was just moved up into the first category that already had mattress there, so that essentially changed the fee from fifteen to thirty dollars. Fixing the same stormwater rates that we just voted on under the Financial Matters. And it removed the point zero zero seven ALS one ambulance table row to just be point zero zero. Removed the plus two dollars per a butter notice for all of the planning and zoning notice records. It fixed some of the headings for the dog and kennel licenses as well, since that was kind of unclear in the table. There was an ad of the three-dollar street maps for the clerks. And then we did get some clarifications to some of the questions that the council had, as well as the Subcommittee had. So it was clarified that the stormwater rates are per, they're not per category. It was a little confusing as to which the table was trying to refer to before. So as an example, if you fell into the ten-acre category and it was five hundred eighty-eight dollars, that's really five hundred eighty-eight dollars per acre. So really, at ten acres, your total was five thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. And then there was a question about with the waiving of fees, if the town had any sort of like financial policy about waiving of fees, and we don't have anything specifically except that the collector does follow the Mass General Law, Chapter sixty, Section fifteen, that allows them to waive fees that are less than or equal to fifteen dollars in value. And then there was a question at our last meeting as well about the Little Red Schoolhouse, where it had a percent per
student charge.
Student charge, and Donna had clarified that, that it was a charge that participants would pay, so if they were to pay the vendor like forty dollars for whatever class or activity was happening, then there may be like a four-dollar or ten percent charge of that class that should be remit to the town. And some classes have different overheads, and therefore different ranges, so they don't treat like a dance class the same as they would a painting class based off of the number of participants and what kinds of activity may be happening in the space. And she said there was generally a range of like four to forty percent that the amount would be. And then what was the last? Oh, that was it, I think. I think those are the answers to all the questions that we had. So I think I covered the overview from where we were last time for the first update. Someone wants to start the pleasure of reading it again for our second time, since it is a second reading?
Sure.
Thank you, Ralph.
Well, I'd rather do the front eight or ten pages than the last, so. Chapter five hundred Fee, Fine, and Penalty Schedule. We are looking to add in subsection five hundred dash four, which is Collector, Treasurer, Department, these fines and penalties. Subsection five hundred dash four will now be five hundred dash five. We're also changing subsection five hundred dash five to five hundred dash twelve. Adding subsection five hundred dash thirteen, which is the Recreation Department Fees, Fines, and Penalties, and changing five hundred dash twelve to five hundred dash fourteen. That is a page one. Like in this, just keep going, okay. On page six, we have subsection five hundred dash four. It used to read Council of Aging. It will now be, five hundred dash four will be the Collector, Treasurer, Department Fees, Fines, and Penalties. Again, directly under that, the subsection five hundred dash four will now be five hundred dash five, which is Council on Aging Fees, Fines, and Penalties. And then on page seven, subsection five hundred dash five will now become subsection five hundred dash twelve, which is the Public Works Department Fees, Fines, and Penalties. And then under, under that, general fees, fines, and penalties for the Public Works Department, engineering inspection rate, two-hour minimum will be increased from fifty dollars to the new fee of seventy-five dollars per hour plus IRS standard rate mileage. And then under subsection five hundred, I think that should be twelve, isn't it? Why is it like, oh? So on page eight at the top, it should read five hundred dash twelve. Anyways, under the five-year roadway moratorium, next, right before that, under current unit cost, the four dollars is now going to be sixteen dollars per square foot. Five-year roadway moratorium fee, it's going to go from two thousand five hundred dollars to three thousand dollars, and that's for less than one year old. Then two thousand dollars to two thousand five hundred dollars between one and two years old. The fee is from one thousand five hundred dollars to two thousand dollars, and that's between two and three years old. There will be an increase from a thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars for pavement that is between three and four years old. And then an increase from five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars for pavement between four and five years old. On the next line, we're suggesting that the new line read the DPW Superintendent with the knowledge of the town manager reserves the right to waive the LC, MC, or moratorium excavation fees if it is determined to be in the best interest of the town. The difference is we're adding Superintendent with the knowledge of the town manager, as previously stated. Then under five hundred, I believe it's dash twelve E, which is transfer station fees. Under item, it'll say residence only, transfer station sticker are allowable items, and we're going to remove the dump. The word dump. And then under fee, we're going to increase it from fifty-dollar fee on a yearly basis to sixty dollars. Under bulk item, couch, rug, table, et cetera, it's ten dollars per item. And we're going to increase from fifteen dollars to thirty dollars per item for a mattress or a box spray. And you must also have a yearly sticker. At the very bottom, we are going to remove the mattress, the thirty dollars, as it's now listed up above. And then under five hundred dash twelve F, water service fees, under illegal hookup to water, that will be increased from five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. And then under five hundred dash twelve G, which is water sewer and stormwater rates. The water standard rate will increase from four dollars and forty cents per one hundred cubic feet to four dollars and sixty cents per one hundred cubic feet. The water agricultural rate now rate will increase from three dollars and thirty cents per one hundred feet to three dollars and forty-five cents per one hundred cubic feet. The sewer rate will increase from four dollars and seventy-four cents per one hundred cubic feet to four dollars and eighty-four cents per one hundred cubic feet. We are recommending, under the next category, the FY twenty-five be removed from the stormwater enterprise rates. And then, under stormwater enterprise rates, as we said before, they're all changing. Do we want to read all of these? Okay. Less than one acre. Well, you're going to take over as soon as I finish this column.
Less than one acre.
Surface. We're going to remove the equal two hundred dollars from the description column, and under stormwater fee, it'll be two hundred and twenty-four dollars per acre. Greater than or equal to one acre and less than two acres, impervious surface. Under the description column, we are removing equal two hundred and fifty per acre. And the stormwater fee, it's going to be increasing from two hundred and sixty-five dollars to two hundred and seventy-six dollars, and the words per acre are being added. Greater than or equal to two acres and less than five acres impervious surface, we are removing the wording equal to three hundred and fifty dollars per acre under the description. And under the stormwater fee, we are increasing from three hundred and sixty-five dollars to three hundred and eighty dollars per acre. Greater than or equal to five acres and less than ten acres impervious surface, under description, we are removing equal four hundred and fifty per acre. And under stormwater fee, it will, we're going to remove four hundred and sixty-five dollars, and it will be increased to four hundred and eighty-four dollars per acre. Greater than or equal to ten acres of impervious surface, under description, we are removing equal five hundred and fifty per acre. And under stormwater fee, we are removing five hundred and sixty-five dollars. It is increasing to five hundred and eighty-eight dollars per acre. All yours, Jim.
Under commercial condos, less than an acre, less than one acre, impervious surface, striking two hundred dollars. Under stormwater fee, striking two hundred and fifteen dollars, adding two hundred and twenty-four dollars per acre. Greater than one acre, less than two acres, striking, striking two hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Under stormwater fee, striking, excuse me, striking two hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Stormwater fee, striking two hundred and sixty-five dollars per acre, adding two hundred and seventy-six dollars per acre. Greater than two acres, less than five acres, impervious surface, striking three hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Your stormwater fee, striking three hundred and sixty-five, adding three hundred and eighty dollars per acre. Greater than five acres to less than ten acres, impervious surface, striking four hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Under stormwater fee, striking four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Adding four hundred and eighty-four dollars per acre. Greater than ten acres, impervious surface, striking five hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Under stormwater fee, striking five hundred and sixty-five dollars per acre. Adding five hundred and eighty-eight dollars per acre. Farm slash agricultural vacant land, striking fifty-seven dollars, adding fifty-nine dollars. Next column down, striking the question mark, and striking agricultural vacant land. Their mixed use parcels, striking seventy five dollars, adding seventy eight dollars. Less than one acre, impervious surface, striking two hundred dollars, next column, striking two hundred and fifteen dollars, adding two hundred and twenty four dollars per acre. Greater than one acre, less than two acres, impervious surface, striking two hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Following column, breaking two hundred and sixty five dollars, adding two hundred and six, two hundred and seventy six dollars per acre. Greater than two acres, less than five acres, impervious surface, striking three hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Next column, striking three hundred and sixty five dollars, adding three hundred and eighty dollars per acre. Greater than five acres, less than ten acres, impervious surface, striking four hundred and fifty, fifty dollars per acre. Next column, striking four hundred and sixty five dollars per acre, adding four hundred and eighty four dollars per acre. Greater than ten acres, impervious surface, striking five hundred and fifty dollars per acre, next column, striking five hundred and fifty six, five hundred and sixty five dollars, adding five hundred and eighty eight dollars per acre. Exempt parcels, residential, striking fifty seven dollars, adding fifty nine. Exempt parcel of residential vacant, striking forty seven, adding forty nine. Less than one acre, impervious surface, striking two hundred dollars, next column, striking two hundred and fifteen dollars, adding two hundred and twenty four dollars per acre. Rather than one acre, less than rather than or equal to one acre, less than two acres, impervious surface, striking two hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Next column, striking two hundred and sixty five dollars, adding two hundred and seventy six dollars per acre. Rather than or equal to two acres, less than five acres, impervious surface, striking three hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Next column, striking three hundred and sixty five dollars, adding three hundred and eighty dollars per acre. Greater than equal to five acres to less than ten acres, impervious surface, striking four hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Adding, excuse me, striking four hundred and sixty five, in the next column, adding four hundred and eighty four dollars per acre. Greater than or equal to ten acres, impervious surface, striking five hundred and fifty dollars per acre, next column, striking five hundred and sixty five dollars, adding five hundred and eighty eight dollars per acre. Under golf courses, striking five hundred and sixty five dollars, adding five hundred and eighty eight. Page thirteen, subsection five hundred dash five, striking FY twenty five in the storm, uh, water enterprise fund rates heading. Under the stormwater fee, breaking seventy five dollars, adding seventy eight. Under towers, striking one twenty five, adding one thirty. Under vacant industrial, striking forty seven dollars, adding forty nine. Subsection five hundred dash six, fire, fire department fees, fines and penalties. Under ambulance service, BLS emergency and nonemergency transport, striking one thousand three hundred and forty nine dollars and four cents, adding one thousand four hundred and three dollars. BLS emergency transport Medicare, striking four hundred and fifty six dollars and nineteen cents, adding four hundred and sixteen dollars and fourteen cents. BLS nonemergency Medicare, striking two hundred and eighty five dollars, eleven cents, adding two hundred and ninety one dollars and ninety six cents. ALS one emergency, nonemergency transport, striking two hundred and fifty five dollars and seventy seven cents, adding two hundred and forty two dollars. Even striking, uh, seven.
Jim might think that was wrong. Two thousand one hundred and fifty five.
Thousand one hundred and fifty five dollars.
Seventy seven cents struck.
Seven cents, adding two hundred and forty two dollars. Two thousand two hundred and forty two dollars, they're all blending together. ALS one emergency transport Medicare, striking five hundred and forty one dollars and seventy two cents, adding five hundred and fifty four dollars and seventy three cents. ALS one, nonemergency transport Medicare, adding, excuse me, striking three hundred and forty two dollars and fifteen cents, adding three hundred and fifty dollars and thirty five cents. ALS two emergency transport, striking three thousand two hundred and forty four dollars and sixty three cents, adding three thousand three hundred and seventy four dollars and forty two cents. ALS two emergency transport Medicare, striking seven hundred, uh, eighty four dollars and eight cents, adding eight hundred and two dollars and eighty nine cents. Mileage per mile, striking three hundred, excuse me, thirty six dollars and forty cents, adding thirty seven dollars and eighty six cents. Mileage per mile Medicare, striking eight dollars and eighty cents, at, uh, adding nine dollars. Intercept fee, three hundred, adding three hundred and twelve dollars.
And under five hundred dash eight, library fees, fines and penalties, we're striking replacement library cards, two dollars. Then under five hundred dash nine, local licensing authority fees, fines and penalties. We have restaurant, all alcoholic beverage on premise, uh, striking two thousand two hundred dollars, adding two thousand four hundred twenty dollars. Restaurant beer and wine on premise, one thousand, we're striking and adding one thousand one hundred. Package store, all alcoholic beverage off premise, two thousand two hundred dollars is stricken and adding two thousand four hundred twenty dollars. Uh, package store beer and wine off premise, we're striking one thousand and adding one thousand one hundred. Farmer series pouring permit, we're changing from five hundred to five fifty. Club license is changing from six fifty to seven fifteen. Veterans club license is changing from six fifty to seven fifteen. Then a new application fees, new retail liquor license, new one hundred dollars. Transfer retail liquor license, new one hundred dollars. Then under five hundred dash ten, B, planning department, and C zoning board of appeals, we're removing plus two dollars per butter notice from each category. Five hundred dash twelve is renumbered to five hundred dash fourteen, town clerk fees, fines and penalties. With the addition of street maps, three dollars. The header of dog license fees, dog licenses beneath, and then kind of license fees for the dog ranges that were already previously beneath. And we have new five hundred dash four collector treasurer department fees, fines and penalties. Advertisement fee, cost thereof, with the reference of MGL chapter sixty, section fifteen. Betterment release, four dollars, MGL chapter eighty, section twelve. Certificate of redemption recording fee, one hundred five dollars as Bahamian County Registry of Deeds. Demand fee, twenty dollars, MGL chapter sixty, section fifteen. Instrument of taking recording fee, one hundred five dollars as Bahamian County Registry of Deeds. Municipal lien certificates, fifty dollars, MGL chapter sixty, section twenty three. Post-public notice, five dollars, MGL chapter sixty, section fifteen. Prepare advertisement, ten dollars, MGL chapter sixty, section fifteen. Prepare instrument of taking, ten dollars, MGL chapter sixty, section fifteen. Return payment fee, twenty five dollars, MGL chapter sixty, section fifty seven A. Warrant fee, ten dollars, MGL chapter sixty, section fifteen. Online telephone payment fees, Unipay, check fifty cents, Visa debit card, three dollars ninety five cents. Credit cards, online phone, fee assessed on a per transaction basis. And then we have section five hundred dash thirteen, recreation fees, fines and penalties. Little Red Schoolhouse birthday, fifty dollars per four hours. Little Red Schoolhouse classroom rental, fifty dollars per four hours plus percent per student charge. Community gardens, full plot, dollars, community gardens, half plot, twenty dollars. Pine Knoll Birch Hall, fifty five dollars an hour, resident, seventy dollars per hour, non-resident. Pine Knoll Pine Lodge, fifty five dollars an hour, resident, seventy dollars per hour, non-resident. Pine Knoll Grass Picnic Area, forty five dollars an hour, resident, sixty dollars an hour, non-resident. One thing that it looks like from our last meeting that we forgot to update was spelling out the word resident and non-resident instead of it just saying res dash. So it has now been read, it is an opportunity, since it's a public hearing, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time on this matter. Saying none, I'll close the public hearing, public input for public hearing. Does the council have any comments or questions or?
So, um, on the last page, under the Little Red Schoolhouse Classroom Rental, under reference slash comments, should we put, um, range, like student charge ranges between four and forty percent under the comments?
Yeah, it's not a bad idea. If everyone's in agreement of that.
That was the information.
And then, doesn't have to be done this time, but I'm thinking going forwards. Um, maybe the stormwater enterprise rates. I notice that there's many categories with the same impervious surface, with the same exact rates. Can we look in the future to do basically like one column that covers all of those categories and only put those rates in once? Yeah, just list all the categories that it covers and these, this is the rates. I think it'll be a lot easier to read going forwards. Um, Jim will appreciate it.
Oh, you got volunteered the next year.
Read it and all, um, I think everything's changed for this year. Uh, maybe that's something just to look at going into next year is as an alternative.
That's a good idea.
No, that's a good point. I didn't even realize, I noticed the same thing as we were reading it, and I'm like, oh, we just said the same number four times. But I didn't realize it when you're reading the numbers on the page. All right. Hey, any other comments? There's none, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion's been second made and seconded to close the hearing, any other discussion? Saying none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Uh, Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
Hearing is now closed, and then I will entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the proposed bylaw amendments to five hundred fee, fine and penalty schedule as presented. Remove section ten dash nine fee and renumber sections. We did in dash ten, three, ten dash nine, within chapter three hundred and ten, alcoholic beverages, article two. Liquor license rules, regulations and fees, remove section three seventy nine dash five license fee in chapter three seventy nine, public entertainment, update any other reference to said fees in the bylaws.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
As presented, um, schedule five hundred as presented and amended. I'm assuming that's what we're going for, such as the Little Red Schoolhouse, adding those in.
Yeah, if we want to be specific, we could amend the motion to add those couple things that we just commented on.
And then the only thing I'm curious about is the sections three, ten dash ten, three, ten dash nine. Um, the alcoholic beverages and all, as we didn't those at all. Um, tonight, all we've been discussing is chapter five hundred. So I understand what these are, I just don't think the public would understand. Um, these are other areas within our bylaws where these fees are included within the bylaw that we're looking to remove and just put everything into the fee schedule. Should that be done as a separate motion? I'm just not sure, I mean, like I said, it's not something we've even really discussed. Uh, the agenda was to discuss chapter five hundred fine schedule and not the other chapters. Do we adopt it here and through the charter review process, take it out of the bylaw?
We can do it either way, I mean, to me, they're both related since we're talking about all the same fees, fines and penalties, it's the same number, we're just updating the references or striking the references in other related areas, but it's the council's pleasure if we want to do that at a different time.
I guess my question is, is the council aware of all these locations and what the fees are? And the portions that we're removing. I'm good with that.
Well, I think if under the some same topic, which is really what it says, right? If, if those revisions were read in the first and the second reading, I think you're okay. Even if you're calling it chapter five hundred, because if you're changing something in five hundred, that changes something somewhere else in the same topic, which you have to read them twice.
But we're only changing the amount. And in this case, we're asking for all of that language to be removed from those other chapters.
Oh, you mean delete the chapter?
Yeah, I, yeah, the letter underneath the chapter.
My thought would be, again, if we were changing the amounts from, let's say, a thousand dollars to twelve hundred, that would be appropriate. But when you're looking to remove the fees from that, I think it should be a separate public hearing on it. Um, and I think we're already doing this exact process under the bylaw review. I would, I would suggest to, um, make a motion that we amend chapter five hundred fee fine schedule. Any related areas for those, not for the pricing within the bylaws, but not to literally remove sections out of the other portions, the other chapters.
Someone like to rescind the motion that they made and make the new one?
Or again, I, I'm just asking for discussion, what's?
I think your suggestion and how you just ordered it would work.
Yeah, that's fine. So do you want me to rescind? I can rescind my motion.
Sure.
I rescind my motion.
And then is there a new one? It'll essentially be the first part, but without the two removed sections and then, and update any other reference, et cetera.
You want me to try?
No, for it.
So I make a motion to approve the proposed bylaw amendments to chapter five hundred fee, fine and penalty schedule as amended night, um, with the few additions that we had that we discussed. Um, and change any other related sections within the bylaws pertaining to the fees, fees, fines.
Is there a second?
I, I just asked him if he was.
I covered everything.
Let's hear a second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Saying none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
Hey, the motion passes.
Can I ask something sort of for, for operations?
Sure.
The bylaw is now amended.
Fees, fines, penalty.
Correct. Is this effective immediately or July one? And I only ask because I need to buy a dump sticker tomorrow. I wish I was lying.
Transfer station.
I mean, transfers. Thank God you're taking notes. No, I'm just saying.
They make it for July one. I agree.
I guess that was my thought processes for the next fiscal year. These fees, fines and penalties.
I think that was the intent, but I suppose it's technically effective now. Unless we.
I'm sorry.
Good point, I didn't even think about.
You went quick on the discussion on me on that one, after you guys rescinded it, I, I, yeah, so. I just want to make sure operationally that everybody knows what the score is tomorrow morning.
I thought our thought process is always it's for the next fiscal year.
Which I would agree, because the water rate really can't change tomorrow.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's the intent, but we probably should be clear about it in the way we vote on it, and I didn't think about that until.
And I didn't think about it till.
To change that or?
Would effective July one, twenty twenty five?
I think we could make a new motion that just says that the
Yeah.
Previous adoption of chapter five hundred is effective July first.
I move that the previous adoption of chapter five hundred fees, fines and penalties shall become effective on July first.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Saying none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
I'm a yes.
You almost asked me. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
They save ten dollars, okay?
I'm gonna wait till July second now, I feel bad.
I'm gonna chip in for the difference.
Yeah.
Okay. So we now have our second public hearing. This is a public hearing to approve five, uh, fifty four thousand two hundred. Nope, I'm, I'm looking up the wrong one. This is a public hearing to approve twenty eight thousand three hundred sixty nine dollars from the Community Preservation Act Historic Preservation Fund Account for Planning Department Digitization Project. The council members are Jim Leiden, Kathy Hill, Anna Jones, myself, Connor O'Shea, Marilyn Richards, Ralph Page, and John Torscha. And I would ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The Eastland Little Town Council will hold a public hearing on June twenty four, twenty twenty five, six thirty PM in the media room of the Council on Aging, located at three twenty eight North Main Street to address a Community Preservation Act application for the Planning Department Digitization Project. Information relating to this application is available for review by the public in the town clerk's office and on the town's website, on the Community Preservation Committee's page. Public hearing may also be attended via Zoom, Zoom webinar. For the council, Gina Crogladdy, town clerk, clerk of the council.
Thank you, Jeanie. And then we do have the, uh, chair of our Community Preservation Committee.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, so the committee met on May twenty eighth.
Okay, so the committee met on May twenty-eighth and we had actually four projects in front of us. Two of which are in front of you tonight for approval. Um, the first one you just mentioned was uh Jeannie's project. She reached out to all the department heads as as is in the application, planning and D P W have gotten back to her. If I'm. Understanding the process correctly, planning will be done first. B W then be identified after planning is done. If this is approved this evening. It was approved by the Community Preservation Committee unanimously. Because we understand the urgency and the necessity to start digitizing all these records. Before something happens and they get destroyed, quite honestly.
Makes sense. Thank you for the overview. Then at this time, it is a. Public hearing, so this is an opportunity for anyone in the public that wishes to. Make a comment or ask questions. Seeing no one in the audience, I'll close the public input portion of the hearing. I had Ralph.
Note my question, and again, I I already, I personally have the answer, but um. Are these records deemed to be historical records? Or are these just?
They're historic. It's it's.
It's like five years old or something.
It's it's historical.
So when we, when we started this project, organizing and categorizing and. Putting the records in, you know, um, better protected boxes. We got the um, or I guess I got the Historical Commission involved and they deemed all the records in there of historical significance, which is one of the criteria that you need for a C P A application. For that, so. So this is like the next step, and I did reach out to all the department heads and only planning and D P W responded. Rob. Planning Director wants a number of box. Boxed files done and a number of rolled plans and maps, then Bruce wanted all of his done. So because of the. The enormity of both projects, we're gonna start with planning and then. We then go on to D P W.
And if I'm correct, after they're digitized, we still have to keep the paper copies.
Yes, yeah, according to the state's records retention schedule.
This is basically uh easier access to get to them.
And if something were to happen to where they're stored, we have a.
Well, that's.
Records, right, if something happens down there.
I was gonna make that point that.
Yeah.
We deemed it necessary in case something happens down there and we lose everything before this process is completed.
So I do believe in the past, the cellar had flooded years ago and many records were destroyed. Hence the reason for the necessity of this, and I think it's a great project and. I'm all for it. But I had to ask.
No, I agree. It's definitely important, not only for making it easier for folks to find stuff instead of.
Way easier.
Been around in boxes, but also just for being able to have them in case a natural disaster or something else happens. Okay, there's no other comments or questions. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
I'm yes.
Okay, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I motion to approve the Community Preservation Act Application for the Planning. ization Project. In the amount of twenty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars from the Historic Preservation Account.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
I'm yes.
First one is approved. Hey, and it is now sixty-four, so we're plenty of time. This is a public hearing to approve fifty-four thousand two hundred eleven dollars from the Community Preservation Act Public Recreation Fund. Account for the Eastland Meadow Baseball Field Fencing Refurbish and Replacement Project. The council members are Jim Lydon, Kathy Hill, Anna Jones, South Connor O'Shea, Marilyn Richards, Ralph Page and John Torsia. And I would ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The Eastland Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on June twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. At six forty-five P M in the media room of the Council on Aging located at three twenty-eight North Main Street. To address a Community Preservation Act application for the Eastland Meadow Baseball Field Fencing Refurbish and Replacement Project. Information relating to this application is available for review by the public in the town clerk's office and on the town's website. On the Community Preservation Committee's page. Public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar for the council, Gina Quagletti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thank you, Jeanie. And and we also.
And again, um, the same evening, this project came before us. We had extensive discussion on this. Uh, the committee. We understand where this, what it looks like, but some of these fences are in pretty sad shape. Um. We've got to be, it's time, I think, we invest the money needed now because. Our field, our playing fields are starting to do with the new high school project. We lost two baseball fields. Right now, we only have two ninety-foot diamonds in town. One at Leahy and one at um. Heritage. These are the fence, these fences are in pretty sad shape. I did look at them. Also, part of the project that at Heritage is to put up protective netting. From the dugouts to the to the stands to prevent. Fall balls from going into the street and kids chasing them, getting hit by cars as well as. Protection for the fans. So it's just more than a fence replacement. It's putting up that protective netting. Which we deem is is something that's very important these days.
Great, thank you for the overview. Then it is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to make a. Comment at this time.
Bro, I'd like to prevent some pictures that were taken. Um. The other thing I'd like to add to that is that um. There's no denying about the passion for youth sports, Neil. I can assure you that baseball leads the pack when it comes to that enthusiasm. Um, we currently have around three hundred kids. And with the numbers that we're seeing in T-ball and Pinto. Uh, it it supports the fact that baseball's got to be strong for a long time in Eastland Meadow. One of the reasons why we um are presenting this, the C I P, I mean, is a um. C P C. Project is because the C I P is so extensive and there's so many needs. Um. That go. That that would go before this in the in in uh. When you look at the C I P list. Um. I mean, when I first arrived here, it's going on in my eighth year, fields were on the C I P five-year list for. East Long Meadow and every year it's it's been. Down, down. So the last eight years. Same, the same projects that need to be done on fields just keeps getting moved down the line. So that's, we thought we'd go a different route. And present this to the C P C.
Great.
Uh, yeah, uh, I'm just going with Donna, but she said, uh, Joe Williams, Eastland Meadow Baseball, uh, President. Um, you know, we've been trying to work on on, you know, getting better fields for for some time now and. You know, to Donna's point, we are, we're trying to grow this program and we do have. You know. Twenty-six teams in total, uh, twenty-seven, if you include the Legion team. Right now that I'm also coaching. Um, so the program's growing. We have a lot of kids. We have a lot of enthusiasm. Um, and it would be nice, you know, I think this is a a good step in the right direction to give us, you know, nice fencing. Give us some some possibly some, you know, our, we had bullpens at Heritage Park. Uh, we would like to put those back. Um, you know, to Bill's point also, the netting would be good to protect balls from going in uh in Dearborn Street as well as basically going into the woods. Uh, on the back Heritage Field because we probably, there's been times where, you know, we've lost. Eight baseballs a game and you know, eight, eight baseballs is basically sixty dollars. So over the course of just a season alone, that's. Five, six hundred dollars plus. So, you know, starting with we're with repairing the fencing. Uh, and going from there, you know, it's just a step in the right direction to to make our fields better. Um, and you know, for that, we we would like you guys to consider. Um, you know, allowing this project to go through.
Great, thank you for your comments. Anyone else? See anyone else? We'll close the public input portion of the public hearing. And if the council has any comments or questions. Ralph?
So. C P C is uh extremely tricky. Um, especially under recreation. So I took the time to. Go to the Community Preservation Coalition website. Um, page six to seven. Um, the top line says CPA funds may not be spent on ordinary maintenance or annual operating expenses. Only capital improvements are allowed. With that being said. I think the repairing of the existing fences and all fall under maintenance. Um, this is a normal maintenance cost that should be addressed, should be taken care of. Um, whether it's through our D P W, um. I I don't think the fund should be used for that. Now, with that being said, the addition of netting, I think that's a capital project. That's not something that existed. That's something that. Could be added. Um, I think that becomes a capital project, something new. And I would have no issue. Myself with adding netting and all. But I do think, I mean, everything that I've read, even from um, the Baseball Association. Uh, second paragraph, in addition to the normal repair and replacement work. I mean, that just. Goes to show that. These are things, I mean, and even. In the pitchers, I mean. Adding pole to the bottom and stuff that that should be under normal repair. We should be handling this. We should be fixing this as we. Go along when there's problems. Um, but I don't think. I don't think that use of money. Is allowed under CPA. Um, I mean, maintenance is completely separate and they're very straightforward when they say that it's not allowed. Um. I again, if they were to amend, and this is only myself speaking, if they were to amend and come back and say. Hey, we'd like CPA to or CPC to spend the money on the netting and all. I have no issues with that. That's my thought process on it. Um. I don't know if anyone else is. Or if anyone else would like. The coalition, again, I printed this directly off of our. So we pay for the Community Preservation Coalition. We pay to be a part of it so that they can give us uh information, updated stuff and. Um. I mean, maintenance has always been one of those. It's just not allowed. Um. Again, capital projects and all. I have no, no issue with.
I'm. I did read that same sort of thing, but I guess maybe I interpreted it. Different when I saw the mock-up plans and it was talking about. Changing out and replacing bottom rails that. To me, that sounds less of a maintenance activity and more of a. Slight capital. Project in nature, but. I don't know, I guess it's a gray area of interpretation.
Unfortunately, the maintenance part of this is open to interpretation, and I understand what you're all saying. But we look at it as a safety hazard too. Kids sticking their hands under those fences and getting cut.
I agree with you. It absolutely.
It's it's a, it's just a gray area. So the committee approved it. And put it in your hands to get your, get your, no, it's just the way the process works. We had extensive discussion on this and we're really, the committee was really genuinely concerned. When Joe brought up the point that there's sharp edges underneath that fence that kids. It's just a natural instinct. Ball rolls under a fence. Kids are gonna go under, go under and get it. You know, but we understand what you're saying as far as the maintenance because it is tricky and this runs right up against it. I'm not gonna deny it. But you know what? Let's give it a shot.
I mean, I would say it would fall under a capital project if you were saying, hey, all the fences have to be removed. Four feet's too short. We've got to go six feet everywhere. Um, to me, that's a capital expense.
Yeah, something like that is different.
Adding a pole or a bent pole or fixing, you know, a bent fence, that's maintenance. Um.
So in.
In my opinion.
Um. Assuming it's a maintenance issue, then we would. Um, have to assume or presume that. That maintenance would have to come out of the D P W budget. Is that what we'd be looking at?
Yeah, or rec or uh. Do you have it on your capital plan, right? The the fence stuff?
Exactly. There's a lot of things under the overhaul of all of the.
Right. Yeah, so. Yeah.
But it is a conundrum because it. If Donna puts that on the capital improvement plan, it doesn't rise to the same level of. A priority as many of the other projects that do find their ways to the top. So. If there's never going to be the chance to. Um, fund a project through capital improvement because of the town's capacity just to fund. One to one and a half million dollars a year. Then it seems as though we're penalized by not trying to. Um, attach it to, you know, CPC funds. To catch twenty-two then. But if it's a safety issue, what? What compels us to? Not take the chance?
Ralph is right, but so are you.
That's where we, and we wrestle the same thing.
The, you you know, this is our money. I know, I know what CPC says, but but this is, this is town, town funds. And if we feel that these. Um, improvements, if you will, um, address a public safety issue. To me, that. That that weighs more than just the fact that it's being interpreted as repair.
Yeah, and and again, like I said, it's open to in individual interpretation. What's maintenance versus a safety issue? Okay, because it's. It's if it's maintenance, it's gonna prevent, it's gonna make the place safer. It's gonna prevent this, an accident from happening. So to Kathy's point, it's a catch twenty-two. We're in, we're at a real tough spot here because it's if it's maintenance, then how do we address it? Because it it. It will fall, it will fall way down in a pecking order if you throw it in a capital plan. That's just the way, that's just the the way life is. But I think we have the opportunity here. To do something to prevent something serious from happening. And I don't want to say we're taking a chance because we're not under any kind of a microscope here. But I think if if we were questioned on this and we bring up the safety issue of it. I don't think they would say no. I really don't. Because there's, I've talked to Stuart Signor, who is the the chief executive officer. A number of times and he said, safety is a concern, but safety and maintenance often go hand in hand. But he said it's open to interpretation. So even he doesn't have an answer. He leaves it up to the individual municipalities to decide how to move forward.
Question.
Anna first and then Kathy?
Thanks. Um, I don't know anything about chain link fences. So when I read this. It says change. The chain link. So to me, that's like replacing it, not fixing it. So replace. So replacing it is not maintenance, replacing it is. Replacing it. So is that different than? Like maintenance to me would be like to repair it, to fix it. Replacing it.
It was replace or refurbish, and the way it was presented to the committee was where it can't be refurbished, we will replace. So there's two things going on here at the same time.
And that would be at the judgment of the fence.
Contractor.
Contact, okay.
But I think they would have to also come up with a solid proposal of what has to be done. The number here is the maximum amount that it would cost. Just on an initial, without digging into going down that rabbit hole.
I just have one more question. Um, so to me, this is like replacement, so I'm looking at it as not maintenance. So I feel like I'd be okay with. Pushing it through, but my only concern is the fact that I believe something came before, so I can't remember what it was. And it had to do with Leahy Field, but we denied it because. We're not sure what's happening.
Right, that was the drainage issue.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
And, you know, Ralph was.
Study, right?
Well, it was a study, but to Ralph's point, he made it. Very obvious. It's PVC piping that's underneath the ground along the third baseline. That was crushed by some of the heavy equipment that comes in for the carnival.
Carnival, okay.
And it's all clay and it doesn't drain.
And then the other thing is, is I know that we've been, you know, thinking about heritage and, you know, revamping it and stuff like that. I mean, I don't think it's a waste because I think, you know, safety issues here. So, but I just wanted to mention that, like, it wouldn't be anything that would.
Certainly not a problem in a timeline scenario, and I'm not so sure much of the baseball. Complex is in the heritage park design.
Okay, I just wanted to check that.
My understanding was that's correct, and it was the other side of the park that's gonna be taken care of. Which is, I mean, I think the the rec department as well as community preservation. Wants to invest in what we have and and and, you know, keep it going as opposed to, you know, a a million dollar project comes before us to acquire a piece of property. Because we didn't do what we had an opportunity to do five years ago.
My question would be, as you said, a child sees the ball rolling and it. Goes under the fence and child puts his hand or her hand under to grab the ball and.
Yeah.
It's a, you know, six inch cut on the hand in some way.
It's a tetanus shot.
I know that part, but if it's, if the. I know that part, but if it's, if the, if it required stitching. Can the parent come at, come back against the town? Anything's possible.
I think anything's possible and, and the, the soc- the, the society we live in today.
Yeah.
I think anything's possible.
So. First thing I would ask for then is an update on um, what sections of the fence are being replaced? Um, because obviously not all of it is, and if you look at all the fencing around the fields. You'll realize that for this cost, they're not gonna replace all the fencing. Um, so. And as far as the maintenance issue, um, I don't think maintenance rises to capital projects. Um, I think if you take a field, the maintenance uh, fence is probably eight, ten, twelve thousand dollars, which doesn't. Reach capital expense and hence a lot of this stuff. Should be being done in houses, as the problem exists, I mean, I remember um, a situation with the playset. And it's, yeah, it was broken for if, a year or more until it got brought in front of us and all of a sudden, it's like, well, wait a minute. Why is this still broken? Um, I remember uh, Mountain View, the basketball courts. All the backboards are broken and all, and until someone stood up and said, when are these getting fixed? Nothing got done. Soon as it got brought to our attention, all of a sudden, hey, let's get this repaired. I think this is the same type of situation. Um, I think we could take a field at a time, we can go in, do the repairs that we have to. As far as the fencing, um, what I'm looking at is they're gonna be adding bottom poles to it. So the bottom poles literally stiffens the whole bottom of the fence. What I'm not gonna tell you, because I, I know fencing enough, the bottom pole goes on, the fencing still sticks down below it. And a kid can still stick his hand in and get cut, if that's what we're worried about. Um, I just think. I personally think the netting rises to CPA use, I think any maintenance like this, we should be doing this. I mean, um, and this is one of my issues, we have to. We have to find a way to get funding into a certain area that it can be used for stuff like this when it comes up.
And I think that's why it was brought to the C- Community Preservation Committee, to your point, Ralph. Because if they, the budgets are tight.
I, I guess the biggest problem comes in is all the little repairs, when you put them all together, it probably be, come as much as our entire budget.
Yeah, if we do it, yeah, but just trying to.
Do you go and which ones don't you? And I'm sure that's the, the problem that the DPW has all the time. Where do we go, where don't we go? Um, what can be done, what can't be done?
Again, I think it was just the, 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 the rec commission and, and Joe in particular looked at this as a, as a way to get something done. You know, I realized that, you know, when you're dealing with a new high school and you're dealing with can, road conditions and everything else, that recreation isn't at the top of the. Chopping block, I get that, I get that it's not a priority. But I think we can't lose sight of how often these fields are used. You can get fifteen guys that go together, say, let's go play baseball and they're out there playing baseball and everybody's gonna drive by, look at. Our fields are being used, but let's make sure they're safe for everybody to use them. You know? That's the way, when this project, when I first read this, I'm thinking safety. I didn't, I, I understand maintenance, but it's a safety hazard too. Especially the netting, and the netting is like a no-brainer. Even the, you look at what's going on in the major leagues, alright, they have netting all the way down both, both sides now.
Yeah, uh, uh, like I said, to me, the netting is a capital. Um, not been there, it isn't there, it, it should be there for protection. Um, I think that fits perfectly under community preservation. And I'm just, I'm not convinced that the other stuff does and I, I mean, I would rather see us, if we felt the need. To say, hey, let's take a chunk of money and put it in here and get that done.
Yeah, but is there that chunk of money to do? That's the, I, I mean, I understand, I get it. But is that chunk of money, because if we don't do this and it gets kicked down the road, we're looking another year. And then it comes back again. And is the budget gonna be tighter? Is that chunk is, is that chunk of money, first of all, this would cost more and is that chunk of money is gonna be smaller?
I'm sorry to say that one again, this would cost more.
If the, if the, the way inflation is.
Oh.
This project would cost more in a year.
In this issue.
So where's that chunk? Where do you envision that chunk of money coming from?
What's in your reserve fund?
It's a question would inst- when you install the bottom rails, does that cure some of the problems with the fencing below?
Yes.
Would that be a new, well, to me, that's.
Makes it, makes it stop.
So that's a new addition.
That being said, uh, I just questioned the town manager about the reserve uh, fund. And there's still funding in there for the next week or whatever.
Yep.
Until it gets turned back, which it does every year. Do you have a general idea of?
How much are you picking up on CPA?
Thousand three. That is twenty thousand.
Of the face, so do I have thirty-four? I mean, sure.
Sure, just go ahead, Joe. Um, can I just, sorry, say a few things? Um, I, I, I walked with um, Mike from GMH on this project. Directly, um, this, these quotes. Uh, are very specific to the type, to the exact things that we were trying to do. Um, and in the spirit of what we were trying to do this for, we were trying to keep it cost efficient, right? So I only wanted to replace the fences that truly needed replacing. And we wanted to re, you know, realistically refurbish the fences that were already there. A lot of these fences do have the rails, but they're buried. Six inches under the ground, so they need to be unburied and then retied up. But if you go to, you know, for instance, this front field at Heritage, um, the backstop, it's only a matter of time because there's literally. Prongs of fence that stick out and I'm actually shocked because the DPW probably, um, weed whacks it every time they're there. And I'm shocked honestly that a kid has not been stabbed in the hand, relatively, because anytime, there's a million pass balls. And I'm surprised someone hasn't tried to reach in and they would get stabbed because they're literally sticking out like that. So to me. You know, and trying to be cost efficient about this whole thing is, I wanted to only replace the items that needed replacing, which are actually a lot of the fences that. Are listed on this project, and then if something can just truly be where the bottom rail is dug out and the fence is re-tied down. Then that would be, you know, fine as well, but that was kind of the spirit of what I was trying to accomplish and. And, you know, combination with, with Donna here when we, when we decided to, to submit this project, but this, these diagrams. Um, I know they're kind of, I guess, you know.
Baseball guy, you're not an artist.
I tried to do it like over, this is me, I tried to do the overhead pictures of what exactly we were looking to try and accomplish and, and replace and or repair. Um, with these overhead Google images. Um, so, and, you know, that's really the, the idea behind it is that. Trying to be, I was trying to solve a problem, which it's safety for sure, that's number one. And number two, they're just, these fences are just so tired. I mean, the bullpen area on both heritage fields. Is basically non-existent and it hasn't even been operable in forever, so anytime anyone's trying to throw bullpen. There, the balls either end up in um, on, where are we, North Main Street? Or they end up, you know, in the woods, or they hit some car that's parked in the back corner of Heritage Park, so. That's kind of what the idea was behind, you know, doing those types of things. Um, and I just didn't wanna break the bank, so to speak. I mean, realistically, we could have GMH go back and. Give us a quote for brand new fencing for all of these and I'm sure it would be three times as much, but, you know.
No, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. So I was just trying to be conscious about, you know.
Appreciate it.
Trying to, what we were trying to do here and not tie up too much CPC money, but get done what we needed to get done. Um, and then, you know, move on to the next project ideally. So I just wanted to say that, guys.
Thank you.
Sure. And now I'm trying to be delicate with this or careful, but if as um. Mr. Williams has stated that the, the description of the backstop at Leahy. Um, what is the standard of care when a DPW worker? Is weed whacking and knows prongs are sticking up? Does, does that not go to the foreman of the crew?
Would think that that would be reported, yes.
Okay, that's.
How, how quickly it gets.
I, I mean, other. Right, but.
Yeah.
Strikes me as. Something that.
I mean, unfortunately, the projects, the, these problems haven't cropped up overnight, it's been going on for quite a while.
And this is a conversation we have every time and the next time we have it, we'll have a different view of what. Maintenance is and what's a capital project and what counts and what doesn't, and this is. Why CPC has such a hard time picking projects and what makes sense and what doesn't, right? I would call replacing a roof, maintenance. But it's a capital project too. So. They do, it depends on your argument and what the asset is and how much you're replacing. Uh, to me, this is beyond maintenance, this is a. Referible replacement of.
Language in here.
Lot of a portion of a fence. And I'm not saying that because I don't have. Thirty-four thousand two hundred and eleven dollars in the reserve fund that I'd be willing to put up if you put twenty up for the fence, but. I think the whole project, as described. Can be used CPC. That, that's my opinion, my interpretation, I wouldn't have necessarily. Let the application when it came in, it would always go to CPC, but I don't know that I would have. Sort of blessed it on the way by, does that make sense? I, when I looked at this, this rose to a enough of a replacement to be a capital project, not maintenance. That's the opposite opinion of what you're having, and I totally understand yours, and again, this is why we have this argument. Virtually every time we look at a CPC project.
Because in, and to your point, Tom, Stuart said the exact same thing. It's a, it's very confusing because you run up against, is it maintenance or is it a capital project? And it's open for interpretation. What's maintenance to me isn't gonna be maintenance to all of you people. And what's maintenance to you is, may not, it's just, it's how we interpret this, but I think. At this point, we've brought in the safety issue, which takes the maintenance and pushes it off to the side. Because if we let it hap- if we don't do something now, or we try and use reserve fund or whatever. If the, if the fences continue the way they are, it's only a matter of time before somebody gets hurt and I don't want that on my watch, I really don't. Because I think we have an opportunity here with an interpretation to fix the problem.
I think it does rise higher than maintenance, I mean, maybe just the concept of chain link fence is a little more. Difficult than if it was just a wooden fence and you're applying paint, like, okay, paint is something that you could say is maintenance. But I think the intent, my interpretation of it anyway, of the whole maintenance thing with CPA funding is. Not to have operational costs, like trying to have people that are coming by and picking up the trash at the park every day. That should just be part of your budget, you know, being treated as maintenance here, but this doesn't seem like it's just something that you could. Do every week and improve it anyway. It's like some of these things just are natural occurrences after decades of. Sitting there, like you're not gonna fix the rusted out sharp points of a chain link fence just by doing regular maintenance to it every week.
And that, and that's, that's the point, right? Because the fence itself is a capital asset. It rises to that level, you, I mean, we were just saying, if we had to replace the whole thing, it would be god knows how much. So we're at twenty, we're at a five, ten, twenty year lifespan. If you're replacing that part or all of that fence, that's a capital upgrade to a capital asset, right? And that, that, again, that's my interpretation of this application as it came in.
But that's not.
That it weren't doing.
That it wasn't replacing all the fencing, we're not digging up a field and rehabbing it.
Right.
We're taking certain sections of the fence that are beyond repair and maintaining them, fixing them. Which means you undo the twine, you take a section six feet long that's bent and you twine in a new section.
So if I only replace a quarter of a roof, is it maintenance or is it a capital project?
I mean, you did a whole wing.
That's what I mean, like, it's such a, like, you can come up with a conversation for every angle of this conversation.
This particular project, yes. There's so many different angles to how you can look at it.
So, just so that we can move forwards, it would be my preference that. We suggest to the town manager that because we're at the end of the year, because funds will be turned over, as funds in a street or. That we look to use that to do the, uh, the repair work immediately. Um, under the guidance of the DPW, um, we've issued uh, CPC monies before. That the whole project hasn't been finished, but then allocate the twenty thousand dollars for the netting. As a capital project that. That, so, so we're getting it, it just depends on where the, the money's coming out of, I guess.
Was, can I, quick question?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Town Manager, were you planning on using that, those reserves for anything, anything else?
In the next seven days, that unlikely.
Okay.
And it would.
I'm happy to, I'm always happy to turn back as much as possible.
Okay, Ralph's suggestion is to basically divide the proposal, half CPC and half your reserves or whatever.
Half, yes.
Under the jurisdiction of the DPW, that's where I'm drawing, we have a, a bid here from a fence company. Who's willing, you know, who's stated how much it's gonna cost to fix. Are we going to um, turn the project, that part of the project over to the town?
Well, what I'm saying is under the guidance of the. So, so they can hire GMH or whatever, and how they fix it is.
Right, if they.
But the money.
But now do you have to go out for the bid process because of the money, of course, you know, the amount, so the project gets stalled.
Do anyways.
Yeah, but.
You're gonna have to go out to bid no matter.
Yeah, so.
So CPC or whether it's under the town, it still has to go out to bid.
Correct, yeah.
I'm supportive as is, it's.
Oh, sorry.
An entire project, the scope of the project, I think is a capital expense, as listed in our motion here is to refurbish. That if you go around to any single other community and look at their ball fields and what these, what these look like. We are nowhere near it. I think we should keep it as is, keep the project and get it as nice looking as we possibly can.
Oh, I agree, it's just.
I think just from, I think too many wheels in motion, trying to fix a problem that we could have solved fairly easily. And not to go rebid and take money from reserves and the money's there, you know, especially from an aesthetic, the public safety, I think is priority. An aesthetics standpoint, I think it fits right into the intent of like, uh, uh, this type of project with CPA money. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine the way it's written.
Can you add something?
Yeah, uh, just a couple of things. I know we've been talking about capital projects. The um, threshold on the capital projects is actually twenty-five thousand, so it would have to be twenty-five thousand or more to kind of fit under the. Capital program, but there is an amendment in the um, website that you talked about, Ralph. About, um, all right, recreational facilities. Where it allows rehabilitation to include replacement of playground equipment and other capital improvements to the land or the facilities there on. To make it more functional. So I think that, that amendment, and there are other areas in here where it talks about keeping things up to code. And safety as well, so we think all of those things would kind of cover the amount of work. That's being done on the fence. It seems like the only thing that they're really keeping is the poles. And they're putting, um, you know, a new chain link and it looks like they're also putting the bar at the bottom as well, so it seems like quite a bit. Of rehab based on what I just saw.
Great, thank you, Ben. Given that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
MES, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And John?
Oh. John. Dinner reservations.
And then I will entertain a motion on the project.
I make a motion to approve the Community Preservation Act application for the East Long Meadow baseball field fencing refurbish. And replacement project in the amount of fifty-four thousand two hundred and eleven dollars from the public recreation account.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
MES, Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
No.
And. Motion passes, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill, thank you, folks.
Donna, thank you.
Okay, we already did a few minutes here to business. Back to discussion, but also for leasing space at three eighty two North Payne Street, which is something that we started talking about at our last meeting and we had some questions and follow up that we come to look into and we provided a updated sheet. So down the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I appreciate you putting it back on the agenda. I realize there wasn't a whole lot of information last time, other than my request for your permission. Though, so we've had this conversation a bit, and I think when this whole three eighty two process started, I think most of us were excited of the prospect of building becoming the new town hall and getting people in there sort of as soon as possible. When we took the, when we ended up taking it by eminent domain, we took it with all the existing leases, which means we essentially sort of became landlord while these leases that were in existence sort of came to pass, all part of our friendly eminent domain taking that we tried to pull off. So we started having this discussion when the building sort of came online in July of is it last year? When we, yeah, when we, when we became owners of the building. And we started looking at and projecting building costs and the revenue from the leases and the payment on the principal and interest of the borrowing to purchase the building. And, you know, when, when the budget process happened and we noticed that we started to get a little bit tight, we had this idea that perhaps it was in our best interest to keep the tenants in there to pay for the building for a little bit longer than we wanted. And so that is really this sheet that I, that I have you here, I have for you here with extending the RFP would be for the space that the Westfield Bank is in, extending them out for, for four years to when the other two large tenants are coming off. So that we can continue to collect that revenue and pay for the building. A lot of this building maintenance number, we're still obviously working on. We've only sort of had the building for a certain amount of time. And these numbers are sort of our best guess on an estimate of what it would cost. So it could be a little less, could be a little more. But you can see how quickly the payment for the building comes on the general fund compared to if we have this extension. And again, with, with the way things are so tight right now, and again, sort of factoring in the goal about the space study and the move to the new town hall. It seemed to me that the most prudent, fiscally responsible plan would be to get all get Westfield extended to when the other two large tenants were coming off so that we could continue to pay for this building out of that fund, separate from the general fund for, for much longer, obviously into, into twenty thirty one and beyond. The other reason for that is from an operational standpoint, yes, we want to make that our new town hall. If we are to move into that space currently occupied by, by Westfield, about five thousand square feet of the twelve thousand we occupy at town hall right now are coming, the rest have to stay. So we're still going to be, instead of fifteen eighty five, we're going to be fifty fifty. So not to mention, we're going to piece out whatever rehabilitation and or capital improvements we want to make so that we can live in that building forever. Or at least until somebody else takes another building in town for a new town hall sixty years from now, hopefully.
Utah.
So all those things sort of made this make the most sense to, to extend the, the leasing of that space out so that when we do move over, we have the, the four or five years now to make a full plan to build out that space for the town of East Long Meadow, probably a town council meeting area that's all hooked up. Say, you know what I mean? Like, so that we figure out with an architect through our capital planning what we need, what we might need and build it out when the building's empty and, and which sounds like a long time away in twenty thirty one. And I know that that was not the intent of most of your vote when we took the building by eminent domain. I think we all wanted to move in there immediately and get out of town hall. Like many decisions we make, we have to be aware that they're going to change and probably will always change tomorrow. And for me, looking at the numbers, looking at the space, looking at the logistics, this RFP is the best move. Pushing this off with some sort of extension, taking the revenue, not putting the building on the general fund and waiting to plan the move when we can all move and move right and move once. So this is the, this is the picture of what it looks like if, if we don't put an RFP out again in twenty seven, we're, we're, that balance is already in the red. Whereas we're not in the red till twenty thirty one. And at that point, you know, we'll have, we'll have architectural plans slash contractor bidder, sub bidders ready to go when that building is vacated. We do our construction and then we all move in. That, that to me is position A. I'm willing to have more conversations, but that would be the cleanest, most fiscally responsible, easiest logistically, operationally move that we can make into that new town hall. So I'm willing to have, obviously, you know, all the conversations. Again, I know this wasn't the intent, the intent at the beginning to wait this long to move into the town hall, but we can't, we're all not going to be able to do it until twelve or twenty thirty anyway. So I think we should extend that, that leasing of that space out to that point. And, and we might as well take the money while we're waiting to all move in there anyway. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I I would say I disagree, not from the fiscally responsible perspective. I do appreciate that aspect of wanting to line things up in an efficient and economical way for the town. But to me, it just seems like that would lead us backwards. And that's at least seven years away before we'd actually be able to even think about moving anyone else into the new space. And it also makes a couple big assumptions that I don't know if they'll be true. One of which is if you wait to redesign and make the space our own for us to all fit in at the same time and make the whole building perfect, probably going to be a big capital expense. What are the odds that the town is actually at that time, six or seven years from now, going to approve? Hopefully it's not this much, but I'm just making up a number, a million dollars to, to redo that. Maybe not high. And then like, what are the odds that all of us on the council and potentially even yourself or the town manager are still in the same position seven years from now? We may think we can wait that long and and things will work out, but what if things end up being different seven years from now with the people making decisions and they have a different take, but that was totally different than the intent of acquiring that building in the first place. I don't want to keep prolonging that for the residents, because that's just seven more years of people having to go to the collector's office at Old Town Hall, but then go over to the assessor's office at New Town Hall. If nothing else, we need to seriously come up with a different plan for people to not have to bounce between them as residents, even if that means employees or someone needs to be cross trained to do activities in both buildings, but residents shouldn't have to play ping pong to get their services.
The problem
Sure.
I, I don't just disagree. In fact, I would like to see everyone there as soon as possible, but I'm looking at the numbers and in the two years, if we're already in the red and how do we fix that? You know?
Well, again, and this is the, the crux of the whole thing is, yeah, we could move I don't know, collector and clerk and treasurer over there and fill up that space. But we, we still have everybody else here. So if you want to go pay for your transfer station sticker with cash, you have to drive across town and pay the collector and then go back and get your dump pass. So it's not great operationally, but I don't think from a long term spending money standpoint, we'll keep slowly moving people in there and slowly spending money to refurbish spaces. And then it just, it's not going to work out right. It, it's always, we're always going to be chasing a move. And that, and again, just my opinion, and I, I respect what you're saying because it, I know that does suck, and that's probably the only complaint we have about assessing being in the new building. Nobody, nobody goes to see Kim. No, but I mean, that's, that is the complaint that the assessing department is now separate from that. And so maybe that's something we can fix operationally. I'd be willing to look into that rather than sort of slovenly, slowly move over in a way that maybe isn't perfect operationally in the long run. When we have this building that we're calling the new town hall for ten, twenty, fifty years, I guess I would say to, maybe we're not here. It doesn't matter. It's not about us. It's about East Long Meadows Town Hall till twenty seventy.
A quick question regarding the table. Without Westfield lease extension, that number, is that number cumulative at the bottom or is that every year we're running that deficit? So like, I'm not seeing a cumulative number there.
It is cumulative.
Yeah.
So, so we're not, we're not, you know what I'm saying? So the, the payment
Okay.
Okay.
The payment is what it is, right? You're not
I'm not adding each one of those numbers together.
Correct.
That's the ending balance at the end of
Gotcha, okay. Well, I just have, like, I guess maybe like one or two comments is, you know, I think when I wasn't here when the vote took place to take the building. But it's a unique situation given the tenants that are in there. And I don't want to call it a prize. This is a self fulfilling conundrum in terms of how to manage this. This is not a easily managed situation. I would want to see it done with, I guess, the most respect to the residents and the taxpayer from the bottom line perspective. Quite honestly, looking at just offhandedly, I'd be in favor of authorizing the town manager to enter into an RFP. I think it's the most respectful thing to do to the taxpayer. As I certainly see why I see your argument, Connor, where it's not the most advantageous plan. And I mean, no matter what, if it's, I don't know, three years from now or five years from now or ten years from now, people are going to be inconvenienced no matter what. As a taxpayer, I'd rather be inconvenienced less by my tax bill than having to go how many times a year am I going to go to the assessor's office over a ten year period? Probably not once. I'd rather save a million bucks or so than worry about, Ralph, I know you're in a different towards normal people.
Haven't even started my new term.
I mean, I get that argument in terms of the convenience factor, but I think the, the right thing to do by the residents is doing the most prudently financial thing possible.
I think one thing we'll have to consider though, if we do go forward with an RFP is that we are we have to acknowledge that we're delaying goals that we've set for the town manager previously because some potential of existing town hall are going to have to be delayed if we're not moving that space out. So things like the police station, probably nothing we can do until twenty thirty three rolls around.
So, so I guess I would say that this is going to take a while, like, so this was and I, I'll, I'll say that I did not accomplish that goal. And I think we're all, it's pretty obvious at this point. And I think it's because that sort of the focus changed and this is not a one year goal. That was, it was never going to be a one year goal. And I guess I probably should have said more about that when we said it together. But this goal is going to take a very long time to even get to a point where we can design that space, right? Like we need to, you, you've seen how long this process takes from feasibility to, you know, getting an architect, what can we do for this? So I think to your point, the plan just changes. This is what I mean. It's, I, I, it's like, we wanted to move into this space at this date. Well, things changed and we changed the plan. It doesn't mean the plan stops. It's just a different plan. And so we'll still be working on that because that's the goal. If the main goal is to do it prudently and do it once and get in there at twenty thirty, we have four years to make sure we hit that mark. And it will take all of that to, to plan that all out. So I don't know that it necessarily stops the goal. It just can't be accomplished right away. Right? You know what I'm saying?
Yes and no. I think if we take a step back to when we had this discussion originally, the original goal was not to stop things or extend leases. The original goal was folks told us we needed more space for town hall. So if that's no longer true, that we don't need that space sooner rather than later, then I would have changed my position that we don't need that building.
So fair point. And, and that was the reason we did the original RFP.
Sure was.
And we got space and we wound up luckily getting a whole new building for a, a very, very reasonable price for the market. I know there was some conversation about that, but we see what it costs to build a building. We're building one right now. This is still a great investment for the town of East Long Meadow, still, still, still. And the tenants are paying for it. And I know maybe it wasn't the intent of why everybody wanted to buy the building. But by the, when we move into it, it will have been half paid for now that, with money that didn't hit the general fund with tenants. And again, I know it's not necessarily normal. Did I use your word normal? To, to be for, 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 to be a tenant for that long, and that wasn't the intent. But the way that the financial pitcher has sort of shaken out, has sort of forced a, a, a change in plan and a change in outlook. And if that, if, if the RFP goes out and the space is filled, now we have this other plan that we can attack. Right now, I can't attack anything. I, there's nothing to, I, like, I have to figure out if this RFP doesn't happen, how, who I'm putting in that five thousand square feet, because I can't let it sit there. I just can't. That, that, that is imprudent. So I, yeah. A pause.
Yes. I have a newer question than the one I was waiting. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. Five thousand square feet is where Westfield Bank is right now.
Approximately. Yeah.
The RFP would allow them to remain for four years.
The RFP would allow a completely confidential public process to rent that space to someone that
Beats all the criteria.
Beats all the criteria in the RFP.
For that length. Four years, I think is what.
So what is? What is
We can pick what use we want. That's our right. And so the RFP would say, we want this use because we don't want to disrupt our other tenants, right? So we can craft the RFP to say this is the kind of tenant that we want for this length, and we think you should pay us this much. This is what we've identified. And then they submit the, their, their submission.
So right now, when does the lease for Westfield Bank end?
March twenty twenty seven. So four gets then the March twenty thirty one.
That's when everybody else's lease runs out.
Well, right, there's a November twenty thirty and a November twenty thirty one. So
Everybody would be out?
Then everybody would be out, out of the way.
My second question is right now, do you have a vision of what that building would look like and which department would be where? Or do you have to? Or do you have to rely on a, a different RFP to get an architectural opinion?
Yeah, we would, we would certainly want that. And this was where me and Bruce's conversation went. The last time we talked was who is occupying what space, who needs more of this kind of thing? And where we want people to sit. So that would just be the full build out of the space. Right? So how many people we got, right? Who, what kind of space they need? Who do we want together? So we didn't want to send Diane. Truth be told, when, when we talked about it, that was not our first choice. Unfortunately, Diane's three person department was taking up the biggest office space in this town hall. And we could get her in up there. It's not comfortable for her up there. They, they didn't get enough space. We're starting to spread out a little. But building is now in that space, which is a much better fit with, with two more people in it, right? So the design will be perfect for our needs. And again, we may have this conversation where one of those, say, call them six thousand square foot quadrants. One of them can be some sort of community space or something, because we have, we're at twelve thousand here. We got to get Donna involved in, in our, because she's stuck in COA and they are, they could use more space as well. So in the full plan of things, we're, we'll fill out that building nice with a conference room or a community room or something like that. That's how I view, that's how I envision it. We have enough space for that.
So is there, does it make any sense to do a second RFP and get some fraction on what an architectural study would look like? Why would you do it in four years?
So I won't. I'm sorry. Hold on a second. Good, good question. I don't need your permission for that, but thank you very much.
Very welcome.
This is specifically because you took this building by, so main.
Yes, so that.
I need your permission to lease portion of it. And that was a gray area from the attorney, and she thought it was in everyone's best interest if we were all in agreement and that I should have your blessing when I go do it. So that RFP for architectural will be forthcoming in the probably next capital plan. That, that's my look. And again, that all has to change if I have to fill up that space sooner than I want.
And you want to wait the four years or five years to do that?
I think it, it's most, this is, that's position A to me. I, I'm, we have twelve other iterations of this plan, and I guess we can hit go on any one of them, but i- in order to do position A, we really need this lease extension. And if we don't have it, then we'll find another plan and we'll find another way and we'll build out that space in a quadrant like hopefully as close to how it will stay when we all move in the first time, so we don't have to go back into that space again. It just may not make sense operationally, and we certainly won't all be together.
Thank you. So a couple of different things. First, at our last meeting, I had asked if you could send me copies of the existing leases that we have. And I'm going to reiterate that, if you could send me copies of the existing leases. That way there, we can see just when each one ends. And again, a generalization is great. I'd just like to see the leases. Because I believe one of them maxia facial will be going into there extended, so they had an option and that brings them through that. My thought process is we approved the RFP, but we put a two year cap on it. And say that we'll allow them to do an RFP for a two year period. And the reason for that is we say, hey, within that two years, we want to see architectural renderings of where we want the building to be, what we want it to look like, how we want it to be built out, what the needs are for each department. The reason I'm saying that is we may find that once those are done, that you know, hey, this section with the bank, because it's got a separate entrance and all, we can go in and we can start all that work. And we can get the clerk or whatever area all built out. My thought process is building a vault room and all in there is probably going to take quite a bit of time. If we wait the four years and then we start that. Because currently, from what I understand from the manager of the bank, there's not an actual vault room. Vault is more like a safe, which can be wheeled out. And I know from talking with Jeannie, she needs quite a bit of space because of all the ballots and stuff like that. So if we do an RFP for two years, we may, as we're coming up to that, say, okay, after looking at the architectural plans, let's let them go two more and get it all done at once. But this way here, we take it in bites. If we can get in earlier, then we'll be able to. We already have the architectural plans. We already know the build out and what we're going to be doing. If we just put it off for four years, let, let, let's be truthful. What usually ends up happening is three months before is when all of a sudden every, all the rush, oh, everything's closing in three months. We always put off to the last minute. Whatever we're doing. And it's not, it's not a new, I'm just saying, I mean, it's same with us. You know, we're going to do a town manager review and quarterly, well, eight months goes by and it's like, hey, we missed those. And again, it's just, we get busy. But that would be my suggestion. Look at a two year RFP and that way there, he can put it out. If it's Westfield that wins or whatever, they know, hey, at least we're in here for this length of time. It helps them, it helps us, helps a little bit with this, but it also guarantees that we're going to actually get the plans and all that we're going to need. That's my thought.
Can I say something quick?
Sure.
One quick question. Do you think the two year will deter Westfield? Are they looking? Okay, you don't know that. I guess all I wanted to say was you had me at the chart. I mean, I think getting, or Kim, hold me at the chart. Um, I think getting in there quicker, yada, 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 all great points, but at the end of the day, sticking with the numbers. I want their lease to help us pay for it. I, I think you could probably get an architect and some architectural, whatever you just said, in there and get it done, planned out for, you know, when they leave. That's all I have to say.
Great. Is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion to allow the town manager, Tom Christensen, to solicit a request for proposals to lease space at three eighty two North Main Street.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to end the motion, cap it at a two year RFP.
I will second that. Any further discussion on amending the motion?
I think if we limit it, we can always extend it. I think if Westfield Bank's in there and they want to stay, they're going to grab the two years because, you know what? Not having to move for at least two more years helps them.
I have a question.
Sure.
What if I don't agree with your two years?
Then you vote no on the amendment.
And then we're.
Because we're going to vote twice. We're going to vote on the amendment.
Right, okay.
I think procedures of my motion has written and being seconded, not voting, being voted on first, is that problematic or?
No, that's why there's. Vote on the amendment before the first motion.
I was thinking you have the motion on the floor and you vote on it as is.
No, you vote on an amendment to the motion.
So can I make one more total?
Because the amendment may not pass.
Sure, Tom.
There, there, um, I had forwarded you the motion language approved by our attorney from before the first meeting. And I feel like there was more to it than that. And, and, and I only say that because was specific about the commercial use restriction. And maybe you haven't seen it. I forwarded it to you, geez, Monday, the ninth. So that was, I didn't resend it, like, because I, I assumed that it was in the whole.
Report and stuff.
What?
Sent us the report. Your town manager's report.
No, I just forwarded this thread from our attorney to Connor. I apologize.
Attachment, and I have the legal like template, but I don't see the Oh, here we go. That's why that.
Sorry, so I'm sorry. I, 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 I just assumed this motion made it into the motions.
I guess my other question is, is this something that has to be voted on at this meeting?
I don't believe so.
Sort of like to know if the attorney has specific language that we have to vote on.
Well, why don't we just vote on?
Not, not, not your, not your length of there are, there is specific things that need to be said in the.
Original.
Right.
Would you send?
If we're amending the original. And the original is wrong. And that doesn't help us.
Good point.
Oh, there. Would you send it to us?
Well, I, I should have copied it and.
Yeah, and I just sent you one too, because it.
I think the motion can be straightforward.
Now I've, now I've copied and pasted it from the thread, so you don't search the thread, sorry.
Wait a minute, you just sent it again?
Well, this one, I took it out of the body, so you didn't have to search for it, which I, which is what I meant to do.
Connor sent it to me on the ninth. So it could have been.
Yeah.
Been on the original, what meeting was that?
Oh, you, we had it for the last meeting.
Yeah, for June tenth, I think. Yeah, the original, original.
Now you're reading my banter out loud with our attorney. Not supposed to do that.
You forwarded it to me.
I did. I didn't know you were going to read it out loud.
Is it right there? And then right there, it doesn't, language approved.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it.
I made it forwarded to you.
I just forwarded it. I assumed you copied it from my email.
Yeah.
So I just. From Dordi Wallace.
You just resent it.
He just resented. Okay.
Can I just read it aloud?
I've hijacked the meeting, sorry.
I recommend that I will rescind my second to Ralph's amendment. So we don't have an amendment on the floor. And then if the seconder and maker of the original motion would rescind.
Rescind my amended motion then. So the second and mine's gone.
Did I make the original?
I believe so.
Jim did. Jim did. Second. So Ralph, I rescinded, Connor seconded. So everyone's rescinded.
Are you rescinding your?
I have not rescinded. Send my, uh, original motion and I'll make a new motion to lease suite one hundred located at three eighty two North Main Street, which is taken by eminent domain for a period of four years to commercial tenant and or until such a time as the town requires use of the premises. Additionally, the town council authorizes the town manager to declare the property available for lease and the commercial use restriction be imposed.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
I would make a motion that we adjust, uh, four years, uh, period to two years.
I will second the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, but just voting on amending the motion, but not the motion overall. Jim?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Anna?
No.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
No.
And, uh. As the amendment fails, so it stands at four years as originally spoken. Any further discussion on the original motion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a no. Marilyn?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Yeah.
Okay, you're done with all the others?
Oh, sure.
Just as further comment, the council willing to suggest that we start looking at, or we direct the town manager to look at the space that's in the new building to start getting an RFP for architectural layout and stuff as soon as practical, as soon as possible.
I would say.
We just have to move them.
Yes, I would expect that to be in next year's budget, if, if not sooner.
I would make a motion, actually, that way there, it's in a motion form that we direct the town manager to, um, look at issuing an RFP for architectural layout of three eighty two North Main to accommodate the town going in to our new town hall when practical.
I will second that.
So I have a quick question, Tom. Given the length of time involved, if we were to do that quickly, is there a possibility of us throwing money away if needs change within the next six to seven to eight years?
If needs change.
Space, personnel change, department change.
So, as you know, uh, we've pretty much been running at bare bones, uh, and functioning quite well. So I don't see a whole lot of expansion in our number of employees that we need to uh, sort of take on in this space. But I think naturally there will be some build out area, uh, which will probably be suggested by the architect. As we, as we build out the space.
Great. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. We, in our first meeting in July, have our annual acknowledgement and affirmation of the council rules, but this was just a reminder to review the council rules that we have set and if there's anything that we wish to add or remove or modify for the next meeting. And then I also sent out the, go through the packet that Jeannie sent us all. Next fiscal year town council calendar. Similar to previous years, we'll only meet once in July and August unless there's some pressing matter that demands a special meeting, but otherwise we'll just follow the normal summer schedule. And the calendar is the same as mostly last year, the first year that I put together this one. I fixed the thing from last year where we had the tentative meeting, the second one in December, I removed that since it's always so close to Christmas. I added the budget public hearings that we have laid out in May now. And then there were a couple of other milestones that we've caught over the last, that I've added in there, like the new transparency bylaw salaries having to be posted by March first. There were a couple of other little things like that, but otherwise it was mostly the same. A few of the things dropped off since it's not the year ending in a zero or a five, but.
And if I click, um, on November eleventh, which would be the second Tuesday, it's Veterans Day.
Right.
So that means we have to meet on the closest Thursday.
Right. Yes, thank you for the call out. I forgot about to mention that. So those are the only things that I have on the calendar, and that also sets the summer meeting schedule for us going forward. So if there's no comments on that, in terms of.
Awesome job. Great job.
Big undertaking. I appreciate having all this input.
Definitely helpful to remind me, otherwise I would forget all these things.
We do it on calendars.
So then looking forward, action items for our next meeting are one and only thing on Tuesday, July eighth will be our reorganization meeting. We will affirm the council rules. Hopefully we will have the year end financial report and any necessary transfers that we need to close out the fiscal year. And that's all I have planned thus far.
There's a public hearing for the private car sales.
Oh.
Second reading.
And if you're all willing, can I still reach out individually to have our sort of, uh, debrief from by twenty five, well. By twenty five, well. Absolutely. Uh, so I, if, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll sort of, I know it's hard in July and August, but if, I, I would, I would appreciate it. Um, if we could spend some time together individually.
Well, QT.
Yeah.
There's no other action items. I'll send a motion to the firm.
So moved. Second.
Let's get into it during any other discussion. Seeing none, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Hey, we are adjourned at eight eleven. Thank you.